Good evening. Welcome to the council meeting for Monday, November 18, 2024. Please rise for the playing of the National Anthem and a moment of reflection. Please be seated. This time I'll look to Councilor Phillips to read the land acknowledgement.
The land on which council meets today is the traditional territory of the Haudenosaunee and the Anishnapec peoples, many of whom continue to live and work here today. This territory is covered by the Upper Canada Treaties and is within the land protected by the Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement. Today this gathering place is home to many indigenous peoples made up of First Nation, Inuit, and Métis. The Dish with One Spoon Wampum Agreement should remind us of our responsibility to ensure the Dish, the territories on which we live and work, is never emptied, and that we take care of the land and its inhabitants in a way that ensures its future sustainability.
Thank you, Councilor Phillips. We are starting this evening with closed session, so I'll look to the clerk to read the reasons for going into closed.
Michael Maynard, ADR Chambers Integrity Commissioner Training, Closed Session Pursuant to Municipal Act 2001, Section 23931, Education or Training of Members Provided at the Meeting where no member discusses or otherwise deals with any matter in a way that materially advances the business or decision-making of council.
Can I have a mover and a seconder? Councilor Lindell, Councilor Dodge, council move into closed sessions. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Away we go.
Welcome back. I have a motion arising from the closed session. Two point one, Michael Maynard, ADR Chambers, Integrity Commissioner Training. Can I have Counselor Phillips to move the motion that we received, the presentation for Michael Maynard regarding Integrity Commissioner Training? Can I have a second or for that? Counselor Dodge. I will look to the clerk to call the rule. It should work. Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Oh, did you? Counselor Dodge?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
I was absent, Madam Clerk, so I don't know how you want me to vote.
Counselor Kushner? Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor McPherson?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Ratzleff?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Townsend?
Yes.
Counselor Williamson?
Yes.
Mayor Cisco?
Yes.
That's carried.
All right. We will move on to the mayor's report. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. I want to start by thanking all the folks at the Legions, Branch 350, Branch 24, and Branch 138 for hosting the Remembrance Day ceremonies across the city last week. Ceremonies gave us the opportunity to pay tribute to the fallen members of our community who made the ultimate sacrifice for their country. I want to thank everybody involved for coming out. I know at the Senataph in downtown, we had an excellent crowd again this year. I appreciate everybody who's able to make time. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to join the community to honor the extraordinary legacy of Junior Sergeant Cole Zelenko with the presentation of the Ukrainian-Canadian Sacrifice Medal by the Ukrainian-Canadian Congress and the Ukrainian War Veterans Association of Canada, a tribute to Cole's brave service and ultimate sacrifice. Cole was a remarkable young man from St. Catharines who was driven by a deep conviction for justice and a desire to protect the vulnerable. His dedication to the Canadian Armed Forces and his subsequent service in Ukraine demonstrated an unwavering commitment to freedom and humanity. Thank you, Cole, for your bravery. You will always be remembered. Last week, I attended the Wrapped in Courage Pancake Breakfast Event hosted by Jillian's Place at Market Square. It was a wonderful morning spent connecting with everyone over a delicious meal and supporting such an important cause in our community. I want to say thank you to Jillian's Place for the safe haven and vital support services that they provide folks in our community who are experiencing domestic violence. Last week, we hosted our first Town Hall STC event in the Grantham Ward. I was joined by Counselors Dodge and Phillips, as well as Chief Upper. Residents had the opportunity to voice concerns, share ideas, and engage in meaningful conversations with myself and the ward counselors. Some of the highlights included discussions around the Sunset Beach Renewal Project, climate change initiatives, community safety, and more. Thank you to everyone who joined us and shared their insights. The next Town Hall is scheduled for January 22nd from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Grantham Optimus Club for Port De Luzie Ward residents, with further Town Halls in other wards to occur in the new year, so stay tuned to social media for more details. And I will say, it was raised at the Town Hall. Although the Town Halls are based by ward, any resident of the city of St. Catharines can come and speak at them. We don't want anybody to feel like they have to be in the ward they're being hosted in. Some people may not be able to attend their wards, so please, to the community, feel free to come to whichever one you're able to get to. Last week, I was pleased to join the community to thank the Marata family for their transformational gift to the Niagara Health Foundation with the official unveiling of the newly-named Marata Family Hospital. The Marata family's remarkable contribution will profoundly shape the hospital's future by driving essential advancements in patient care, upgrading critical equipment, and supporting innovation to elevate services for patients, families, and the entire Niagara community. I want to thank the entire Marata family for their generous contribution to health care here in Niagara. Last week, I was pleased to join the community for the official kickoff of the Hotel Do Shavers Snowflakes and Angels campaign with a tree lighting ceremony on the grounds of the Hotel Do Shaver. If you'd like to honor, celebrate, or remember a loved one through the Snowflakes and Angels Christmas campaign, you can visit hoteldo-shaver.org for more information. Today, I was delighted to join Tyler Alsop, Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister of Long-Term Care, at the official groundbreaking for Extended Care St. Catharines' new long-term care home located at 1956 Third Street Lot in St. Catharines. The new 256-bed home will consist of 104 new and 152 redeveloped beds across four floors, with two resident areas on each floor which are designed to create a more intimate and familiar living space for residents. Extended Care St. Catharines is expected to welcome its first residents in early 2027, and I want to thank the folks at Extended Care and to the provincial government for this investment in long-term care support for our community. And I want to thank Counsel Ratzleff for joining me at that today. Earlier this month, I was pleased to attend the grand opening of Niagara Skin and Body Clinic at their new location of 432 Niagara Street. Under the leadership of owner Jessica Sheridan, the Niagara Skin and Body Clinic has become synonymous with personalized care and advanced treatments, and this new space will undoubtedly enhance their ability to serve clients in our city. Couple of upcoming events. This Wednesday, we'll be inducting six new members of the St. Catharines Sports Hall of Fame. The following people will be honored for their significant achievements in sport, either in competition or through other exceptional contributions. Walt Opreznik, athlete builder for handball and football. Andy Van Ruiven, an athlete in rowing. Carol Price, who is a builder in curling and rowing. Robert "Bob" Adams, an athlete in rowing and football. F.F. Ted Nelson, a builder in rowing. And Bobby McLaren, a builder in hockey, lacrosse, baseball, and rowing. This year's induction ceremony takes place on Wednesday, November 20, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. in the St. Catharines Sports Hall of Fame, located on the concourse level of the Meridian Center. The event is open to the public, admission is free, and seating is available on a first-come, first-served basis. Doors open at 5:00 p.m., and a reception will follow the ceremony. Also on Wednesday, we will celebrate the launch of the Niagara Health Foundation's Celebration of Lights fundraising campaign with the lighting of the holiday tree at City Hall. The ceremony will begin at 5:00 p.m. in the front of City Hall, and all are welcome to join us. The annual Celebration of Lights provides individuals with the opportunity to honor loved ones during the holiday season and recognize the frontline heroes of Niagara Health for their dedication, and I hope to see you there. And finally, the city of St. Catharines is delighted to bring back its cherished holiday festival, Let It Glow: A Celebration of Light, for its fourth season, kicking off Saturday, November 23rd and running through to January 5th, 2025. This year's festival will illuminate Rennie Park in Port De Luzie and downtown St. Catharines with dazzling light displays and free, family-friendly activities. Join me to kick things off this Saturday, November 23rd, on opening night to get yourself in the holiday spirit with live entertainment. There's going to be glow-in-the-dark giveaways, complimentary hot chocolate at both Rennie Park and Lakeside Park. There's a DJ, beloved characters, buskers with additional holiday cheer, and the historic Lakeside Park Carousel will be open one night only, offering nostalgic rides. Families can also capture memorable moments at a Santa photo station with complimentary photos to share and cherish. The fun runs from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Saturday, and I hope to see you there. And I will say, just as a final note, I had the opportunity today on St. Paul West to see the CN Bridge finally coming down, and something I know we are all looking forward to and a project that we hope moves as quickly as possible. I want to thank the regional staff who have managed to accelerate the project by a year, working through a fair amount of hardship with some of the organizations that represent interest in the area. Working with CN and Bell has been difficult over the last year, and so I appreciate the work that the region has done to try and move this process forward as quickly as possible. With that, I will open the floor to any counselors who wish to add something to the mayor's report. Counselor Lindell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. The Ameritan Lions Club, we don't have another meeting before this, are holding their Elimination Draw and Turkey Draw on the 6th of December. It's one of their major fundraisers. Tickets are now available. You can ask a lion, or you can drop by Perry's Appliances, and they'll be able to hit you up with some great tickets.
Thank you, Counselor Lindell. Counselor Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as well, there's no meeting before these events happen, so Friday, November 29th, is the Grantham Lions Club Annual Turkey Raffle, so get down there. There's turkeys and hams, and they're going to be selling lion hamburgers and home-cut fries for snacks there as well for purchase. And following that, on Sunday, December 1st, the Lions is also hosting breakfast with Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus, so get down there. It's a great breakfast.
It is a wonderful breakfast. That is true. Counselor Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to remind council and people watching at home that this weekend, the Niagara Symphony will be presenting the music of Queen, backed up by Chorus Niagara. It's Saturday night concert and a Sunday afternoon concert. I understand tickets are going or have gone very fast, so if you're looking for a great event, it is the first, this symphony is the first time it's happened in Canada, and it looks to be it's going to be a fantastic show, so I encourage everyone to attend.
Thank you, Counselor. All right. Seeing no other, nope. Counselor Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to add again that on November 30th, Saturday, the residents at Rio Lane will be having their annual Christmas tree lighting, and if any of you have had an opportunity to go there, it's just a great event. The whole street gets lit up by the residents and great displays, and I encourage everybody to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia. All right. Seeing no other items, I will look to the clerk now for the adoption of the agenda.
There are no amendments made to the agenda, and the following items of additional correspondence have been placed in Council Sugar Sync folder and are generally available to the public by contacting the clerk's office. Correspondence from Saleh Rusiden regarding item 8.3, Oblate Street Honorific Naming Request, Nicholas Corbinis Way.
All right. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Lindell, Counselor Dodge, a second or? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We have the adoption of the minutes. The council adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting held on November 4th. Can I have a mover and a second or? Counselor Kushner, Counselor Stevens? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent reports. The council approved the consent agenda, save and accept those items brought forward for discussion. Can I have a mover for that? Counselor Miller? I will look to the clerk to call out the list of consent reports.
Today's consent agenda, item 8.1, Community Recreation and Culture Services, Recreation and Culture Programs 2024, St. Catharines Cultural Investment Program Funding Recommendations, Rounds Three and Four. Item 8.2, Engineering Facilities and Environmental Services, Housing Accelerator Fund Tactical Influence Infiltration Reduction Study and Remedial Action Plan Award of Project. Item 8.3, Planning and Building Services, Planning Services, Oblett Street Honorific Naming Request, Nicholas Corbinis Way. And 8.4, Legal and Clerk Services, Office of the City Clerk Council Correspondence. Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Counselor Ratzleff?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Townsend?
Yes.
Counselor Williamson?
Yes.
Counselor McPherson? Counselor McPherson?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell? Counselor Kushner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Dodge?
Yes.
And Mayor Cisco?
Yes.
That's carried.
All right. Our declaration to all presenters. Council chambers and all municipalities in our country represent the seed of local democracy. The many acts that govern us understand the necessity of the collective voice when decisions are being made to grow our spaces, pass our bylaws, and to seek opinions into very complex issues, ensuring safe spaces for all in our public discourse. We recognize the right of the majority to decide, the minority to be heard, the public to have an opportunity to participate, and all participants to be treated with courtesy and respect. It is imperative that elected officials, citizens, and staff have input, and it is paramount that we listen to one another and question one another, but that we understand we do this in a way that never undermines any person's ability or their dignity in our chambers. We respect the right for everyone to have an opinion and remind the audience, views of the public do not always reflect those of the corporation of the city of St. Catharines. There are no public meetings this evening, and so we'll move to presentations and item 10.1, Port De Luzie 200th Anniversary Bicentennial. I will now call upon Marty Mako, Chair and Volunteer of the Port De Luzie 200th Anniversary Bicentennial Planning Committee, and Jonathan Belgrave, Marketing Professional and Volunteer of the Port De Luzie 200th Anniversary Bicentennial Planning Committee. Gentlemen, welcome. You can adjust the height. It is the best part of this council chair.
Easily. Ready? Good evening, Mayor, members of council and city staff, on behalf of the Port De Luzie 200th Anniversary Bicentennial Planning Committee. Jonathan and I are here tonight to highlight some of the planning efforts that we've undertaken thus far and some of our exciting plans that we have to celebrate in 2026. There we go. I think it's important to highlight that we all came together as volunteers with one goal in mind, and that's really to recognize and celebrate the community that we all love in Port De Luzie. And so what you can see on the screen in front of you now is probably a number of familiar faces that you've seen even in front of yourselves before. They're strong community champions and advocates for Port De Luzie, but we're really striving to work together as one team here. You're seeing a number of local community organizations in Port De Luzie that are actively trying to make the community a better place 365 days a year. So it really wasn't a tough effort for myself as the Chair of this group to ask for them to become involved in one more initiative. These are all volunteers that are extremely busy, as I'm sure you know already, but when they heard that there was this opportunity to further recognize our community in 2026, I really just wanted to give a strong shout-out to the names you see on the screen there, and in particular to Counselor Garcia, representing City Council, and James, as your senior project manager here at the city. It really tried to show that alignment with the city's work being done in this area as well, so it's a combination of volunteer efforts and council and city staff. Before we started, we wanted to focus on our vision and mission to know as events and ideas and legacy projects came forward, that we were staying true to our vision, mission, and values as a volunteer group. So, starting with the vision for our Port De Luzie Bicentennial Committee, a jubilant and inclusive celebration that brings together residents, visitors, and generations of past and present. We want to create lasting memories, foster pride in Port De Luzie, and lay the foundation for a thriving Port De Luzie into the future. That leads into our mission statement, which is to commemorate and celebrate the unique history of Port De Luzie, its remaining historical assets, and its enduring spirit. Our mission is to organize a memorable 200th Anniversary celebration that unites the community, honors the past, and inspires a shared vision for the future. And you can see at the bottom there, there's six value statements that we thought were also important to highlight. Heritage preservation, homecoming spirit, community unity, collaboration, legacy building, and connection or connected through transportation. The history of Port is really focused on, well, there's transportation through the First Welling Canal, the NS&amp;T Railway, there's always been that strong history of connection through transportation. Now, we didn't want to assume you all knew why 1826, because those who are local historians know there's a number of significant dates in our local history. And we also wanted to pay tribute to the indigenous history, which we know goes back long before 1826. The first peoples have lived in Niagara and St. Catharines for many, many years before that, the Atawandaronk and the Neutrons, and that history is going to be respected throughout our planning efforts. So you see kind of a timeline on your slide now, that what we're focusing on for 1826, that's when the first canal and village development began. You can see a screenshot there of the first building lots and land deeds. That's where we're marking the start of the Port De Luzie that we know today as 1826. And some other landmark events on the timeline with the official first grand opening of the Welling Canal, some heritage structures in Port De Luzie that stand today, and I'm sure you're familiar with, just to give a bit of a broader timeline of why we selected 1826 as our date. The partnership aspect is crucial to this, and we've all efforts. And this presentation to city council tonight is the official kickoff of our roadshow. We plan after tonight to help really turn on the awareness and promotion machine and start a series of roadshow presentations to other community groups, businesses, and well, we're here tonight to try and get other ideas from you, from other community groups that we should be telling our story to, so we can really have a collective impact. So that's a bit of the past, and I'm going to hand it to Jonathan now to talk about what you can expect to see in 2026.
Thank you, Marty. So as he alluded to there, that we really want to bring, connect our community as part of our vision. As part of this, we are a volunteer group, and we want to make sure that we are co-branding with other organizations and community groups in Port De Luzie and throughout the city. So that's why we've come up with strong branding with our logo and our outfits, as you can see, and plans to amplify other events through a co-branding framework. So we are in development of a co-branding framework, which will outline the rules that we would carry out for our branding. With this, we are proposing also having our own events with two anchor events. First will be a winter fair in, on the Family Day weekend of 2026, followed by a summer birthday party of celebrating the 200 years, tentative proposal date in August of 2026. Also with that, we have legacy proposed projects. And here are some examples of ideas that we've come up with as a committee. First off is heritage documentary, similar style to maybe what you may be familiar with as Heritage Minutes, but we're already in discussions with a production company to have a documentary produced. We're also thinking of a time capsule, which will get the community to have input in and develop a time capsule, and then of course, updating our history insight in down, in Port De Luzie. But all of this does cost money, so we have developed a revenue financial stream, and we have four areas of fundraising. Our first method will be through donations, which we will take from the public directly on our website. We'll also take in-kind materials and services from business organizations, and we've already set up through the city where people can make a donation to the Port De Luzie Bicentennial Committee. When they make donations of over $20, get a tax receipt. We'll also be selling merchandise and memorabilia to commemorate the event. We'll be reaching out to local businesses and organizations for sponsorships, and with our, there will be grants that we could apply to that we are researching and applying to. As we develop our budgets, we will have different goals and support that. So what does your involvement as a city council look like? Well, right now, we're just looking for formal recognition and endorsement of the Port De Luzie 200 Bicentennial Committee, assistance with building awareness of this committee and within the communities, support for collaboration with other local anniversary groups, example, the Welland Canal Bicentennial and the St. Catherine's 150th Committee. And we are also looking forward to coming back to council to present future updates on the progress and as we have the frameworks and budgets, present those to you. So finally, just want to plug our newly launched website and social media handles, pd200.ca and Port De Luzie. It is a work in progress, but it is there and available for you to check out, where we will be posting information and be available for people to learn more about the celebrations that we have planned. With that, that is the end of our presentation. Thank you very much for your attention.
All right, are there any questions of the presenters? Council Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Marty and Jonathan. Really appreciate your presentation. Just a couple of thoughts, when you talk about the city helping you publicize this, make sure you contact our communications department and see if we can have some kind of a link on the website to mention that. Second point, as you know, the city had a 2029 anniversary of the opening of the First Canal in Port De Luzie Task Force, which has already presented to council, and they have a number of ideas they presented. Have you communicated with them to liaise and work with them and potential making sure that things dovetail?
That's a great question, and the answer is not yet, but definitely on our radar. That's, tonight was meant to be sort of our formal kickoff presentation, starting with you as our council first, and it's the commencement of our roadshow. So I would say this slide deck that you saw this evening, we could easily deliver to any number of community groups, including the Welland Canal Bicentennial. I think they're a key one for us to get in front of, because we're not trying to duplicate efforts here, we're not trying to step on toes, we're trying to align and integrate with others who are also celebrating. So maybe it's, as Jonathan said, amplifying our message, because we probably have enough capacity to deliver those two signature events, something in the winter and something in the summer, but additionally, we could bring our branding to any number of other events being hosted by others over the course of that year.
Thank you for that, Marty, and you mentioned sources of funds such as donations and grants and sponsors, and I certainly hope that we will get lots of sponsors because it's such a great celebration to have, particularly 200 years, which I know means nothing in Europe, but it means a lot to us here. So not large amounts, but just to make you aware that city council approved a councilor community fund that Councilor Williamson and I both have a little bit of money that can be dedicated to specific projects for not-for-profits and volunteer organizations. So if you have a particular project, you can contact us and we can try to help you with that.
Because Jonathan mentioned some of the legacy projects that we have too. There'll be some special events that you'll see in 2026, but some of those legacy initiatives could last even longer, and they're ones that we could have maybe specific tangible financial asks once we develop the budgets for them.
Council Williamson?
Challenge, and I know that council always appreciates when a group comes before council, not specifically asking for money, and that's terrific. So just to clarify, because we're supposed to be asking questions here, you're looking for recognition and endorsement from the city, which seems like a pretty simple ask and something that we can accomplish, maybe even tonight. I'm not sure if we'll have to ask for a report, or we'll ask staff about that at the appropriate time. And you also mentioned on your nice little historical timeline, well done, a number of other important anniversaries, 150th of St. Catherine's. So I guess Port De Luzie is 50 years older than St. Catherine's. We know that's not necessarily strictly true, but we'll put that out there anyways. And as Council Garcia mentioned, the 200th anniversary of the opening of the canal. So we're looking to try and tie those events together and coordinate things through co-branding and whatever other activities we're going to look at. Has there been, also, you've got the donations, anything over $20 gets a tax deduction, and that's been coordinated through the city, has it? Okay, thank you. And then is there any thought of some kind of like a tangible legacy being left, like a historical marker or some kind of something?
Yes, so one of it, one of the ideas I proposed was the time capsule. So having that established to celebrate, you know, whether we open it another 50 years or 100 years or 200 years, developing that. And then the other part was the documentary. As we live in a digital age, one of the visions of the documentary was to have it be hosted at the current visions of it, is to have it hosted at the museum, so people can see it, view it, whether it be, however it is developed, there are many channels that we can distribute it, and then also premiere it at the summer celebration. That's one of the ideas that we have, so that people can come down and see the documentary during the celebration at night at Lakeside Park.
Thank you. And just one last thing, I know that Martine Oliver's in the audience representing the Port De Luzie Beautification Works Committee. They do a lot of tremendous volunteer work in the community too, and I know the mayor would want to have a local council recognize that individual, and I'm sure that he shares recognizing Martine. So thank you very much.
It truly has been a team effort, you know, and just seeing this number of Port De Luzie organizations come together for something positive, that we all just want to do something special to celebrate our community, that's honestly the only motivation here, something really positive and fun for the community to get behind.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Dodge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the presenters. Congratulations for coming out this evening to share this with us. It's pretty exciting. I'm just wondering, I know that you said you have a winter event and a summer event. Is there like, is it just going to be like all of 2026, or is there like, kind of like a birthday, this is going to be the day that we recognize?
So currently, the plan is to have the two anchor events. The summer event is the official birthday party, like here's the celebration, but we wanted to do something, you know, leading up to that. So that's why we're planning, starting the year with the winter festival around Family Day there. There's a need for Family Day activities and stuff to do in the, in the city and the community, so that's why we are bringing that one forward. And then throughout the year, that's why we want to do the co-branded and partner events, because we are a volunteer committee. We are looking to enhance and bring all the other community organizations together throughout the year, and then have that big celebration in August.
Okay, sorry, I missed, did you guys actually have a date already for the one in August?
Not yet.
Not finalized, we're looking around early August.
Okay, that's great. Look forward to that, and I'm sure you guys are going to have a lot of fun doing all these things for Port De Luzie and St. Catherine's. Thank you.
Picking the date is a tricky one, because there's so many other great events happening in St. Catherine's in the summer, so we're trying to not overlap with where there might be other stuff going on, what's the gap, but still one where we get high turnout. So it's likely going to be around August, but exact date and exact venue TBD, because there's a few possible venues we're considering as well.
Council Garcia for a second time?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I spoke already, but Councilor Williamson brought up, can we not make a motion to, I believe you asked for endorsement and recognition? So if that's okay with the clerk, Councilor Williamson and I can move that?
Well, we don't have anything on the docket for that. I think what Council Williamson was talking about was asking staff for a report to be able to come back. I think that would probably be appropriate. And I was going to, I had a couple of questions along that path, because I assumed someone would be asking for a report along those lines, so I had a few questions. I was going to ask the presenters. All right, fair enough, thank you. Thank you, Councilor. If there are no other questions, I will ask a few. I'm just curious, have you had discussions up to this point with the St. Catherine's Museum?
No, not yet.
Okay, are we, are we planning on having discussions?
Absolutely. That would be another stakeholder I think would be essential for us to meet with when talking about the sort of alignment and partnership opportunities with things that could be going on maybe around the city's 150th that we're not aware of, to make sure they're working together.
I would agree. I think that the two, the two celebrations will likely be different, just in terms of what we're actually celebrating, but I would look forward, I think, Council Williamson, if you're going, willing to make that motion, asking staff for a report along these lines that we ask that the library, not the library, sorry, the museum be consulted in that effort as well.
Smart.
All right. Seeing no other questions, we have, the motion originally was simply to receive. Council Williamson, would I be correct in assuming you'll be asking that a report? You'd be asking for a report to come back in consultation with the St. Catherine's Museum regarding the possibility of endorsement of the event?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll just make sure that that's captured. And then moved by Council Williamson, I'm going to assume that this is seconded by Council Harris. Council Garcia. Harris tries to put his hand up for everything, so. Okay, are there any questions about what we're voting on? So it's a motion to receive and to request a report back. All right then, I will look to the clerk to call the roll.
Council Williamson?
Yes, and I want to give credit to Council Garcia for sitting on this committee and going to all the meetings as well. Thank you.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Dodge?
Yes.
Council Harris?
Yes.
Council Kushner?
Yes.
Council Lindell?
Yes, and please make sure you share the social media up front there, so everybody can see it.
Council McPherson?
Yes.
Council Miller?
Yes.
Council Phillips?
Yes, and one thing I didn't mention is I suggest as a member of the Cramed Wine Festival Board, you get ahold of them, because I'm sure they'd be interested in partnering in some way.
Council Ratzleff?
Yes.
Council Stevens?
Yes.
Council Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Sisco?
Yes.
That's carried.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item 11.1, Office of the Chief Administrative Officer Housing Accelerator Fund Accessible Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy. Prior discussion of the report, I will now call upon Natasha McDonald, Planner One, to provide a presentation.
My name's Natasha McDonald. I'm a planner with the city, and I'm here tonight to present the Accessible Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy. So to start, I want to provide just a little bit of context for the Accessible Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy. In terms of the city's key plans and policies, such as the strategic plan and the official plan, a core pillar is to strengthen neighborhoods and communities by ensuring that quality of life accommodations, or opportunities, sorry, are accessible for all. So this includes supporting a variety of housing accommodations for residents of all ages, needs, backgrounds, and incomes, in order to provide accessible, affordable, and adequate housing for everyone in the city. In line with the city's high-level goals, the council approved Housing Accelerator Fund or HAF. Action plan includes seven initiatives aimed at overcoming obstacles to build housing. Initiative Three, Inclusive Housing in Particular, aims to foster a housing environment that prioritizes inclusion by reducing development costs for affordable, accessible, and purpose-built rental developments. This includes the introduction of financial incentives, such as the Accessible Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy, which is intended to facilitate the construction of new accessible dwelling units. This proposed financial incentive is a milestone of the city's HAF action plan. So what is the Accessible Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy? Very simply, this is a policy to permit the reimbursement of building permit fees for any new accessible dwelling units built within the city. So to be considered an accessible dwelling unit under this policy and eligible for reimbursement under the policy, the unit needs to meet the zoning bylaws definition for a dwelling unit, as well as meet Division B, Section 3.8 of the Ontario Building Code, which outlines barrier-free design requirements. Eligible units can either be brand-new or retrofitted to meet the OBC, they can be rental or owner-occupied, and they can be any dwelling type. So they can be detached, semi, townhouse, accessory dwelling unit, apartment unit, and so on. The only accessible units that are not eligible for reimbursement under this policy would be units that already are required to be accessible through the Ontario Building Code. So for example, the Ontario Building Code or OBC requires that 15% of units in an apartment building be accessible, so these units wouldn't be eligible, but any accessible units provided beyond that 15% minimum would be eligible for reimbursement under the policy. In terms of reimbursement amount, a maximum of $2,000 or 100% of the building permit fees would be available per unit, whichever amount is less, and all reimbursements through this policy would be funded through the Housing Accelerator Fund, depending on HAF funding availability. So a couple scenarios under this policy. So scenario A, building permit fees are $2,100 for the new accessible dwelling unit. The reimbursement would be $2,000 under the policy, and then at the end of the day, the applicant would owe $100. Another scenario, building permit fees are $1,200, the policy would cover 100%, so $1,200 of that, and the amount owing would be $0. owing would be $0. To apply for reimbursement, an application form will be made publicly available, and that application form would be submitted at the same time as a building permit, at that time, planning and building services staff would review the application to determine whether it meets the program eligibility, and if it does, then they proceed with that reimbursement process. So an important note is, even though the policy is called the Accessible Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy, eligible projects won't have to pay first and then be reimbursed, instead, what, what staff would do is, HAF funds would internally be transferred to cover those building permit fee costs for eligible projects, so this would function the same way as the Affordable Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy that was approved by council in February earlier this year. If approved, this policy would come into effect today, November 18th, 2024, to December 31st, 2025, and depending on HAF funding availability, we recommend that staff come back to council early 2026, 2027, to determine whether policy would be available for those years as well. And in conclusion, staff recommend that this Accessible Housing Fee Reimbursement Policy be approved by council, this will achieve a HAF action plan milestone, as well as support high, you know, overarching city goals, so this policy incentivizes the construction of accessible dwelling units, which works towards building a more inclusive city where all residents can thrive, and thanks again for your time, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, for the presentation, a couple of questions, so we will start with councillor Lindell, as we let Ms. McDonald get back to her seat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the city planner, I just, looking for clarification, so if someone has bought a house in 2024 to turn into an accessible dwelling and a rental, they can't apply for this unless they've done it after November 18th?
That's correct, the date, the effective date would be November 18th, 2024, for this policy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Kushner?
Thank you, miss, thank you, Mr. Mayor, how do we define accessible in this policy?
Through the mayor, so the way that we've defined, defined accessible, sorry, accessible units under this policy, is they have to meet the definition of dwelling unit under the zoning bylaw, and then they also have to meet Division B, section 3.8 of the Ontario Building Code, and that section of the Ontario Building Code is what is applied for any sort of accessible dwelling units otherwise, including accessible pathway and, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kushner, councillor Dodge.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, when you're talking about the part of the stipulation is for them to have parking, is that for, that each unit would have its own parking?
Through the mayor, to councillor Dodge, this policy doesn't contemplate parking, so if there's any sort of parking requirements for a dwelling unit, that's through the zoning bylaw, it's, it's not captured under this policy.
Okay, because I, when I was reading earlier, I thought it said that they had to have hard space parking and, and all of that, so I was assuming that that meant that they had to have per unit of parking space.
So if there is parking available, if there's a driveway, if this is an apartment building and there's a parking lot, then there are Ontario Building Code requirements to ensure that there's an accessible path from the parking through to the unit, so if there is parking provided, then it has to capture that OBC requirement, just so that, you know, the spirit of the policy is to incentivize accessible units, so that there's accessible from, you know, the vehicle to the unit, but if there is no parking required for the unit, then, then that wouldn't be applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Dodge, councillor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the planner, how do we arrive at the $2,000 level, like that sounds reasonably low for building fees, as far as we, permit fees that we hear about?
Through the mayor, I, I did consult with building staff, and the average number that I, that kind of came up in discussions was around the 1,500, 1,600, so to give a bit of buffer, I did, we did increase it to 2,000, that should capture kind of typical building permits, based on what we've seen recently.
Okay, thank you, and to you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps to the CAO, I see we're going to be getting presentations on some of these initiatives, once council approves one of these recommendations, if we do, is there a reporting structure to go back to the feds on this, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, thank you, I'll, I'll start and maybe pass it over to Margaret to follow up, but yes, so all of these initiatives that are being brought forward are part of the action plan that we did under the Housing Accelerator Program, and then we meet as staff on a quarterly basis with Canadian Housing on our progress to date with both the initiatives that we have in place, council-approved, as well as any of the unit counts, so that's how the process works.
And through the mayor to the councillor, so we have an update to CMHC and the federal government every six months, so at a six-month point, we talk, we discuss capital projects that we've supported, and then at every year anniversary, we do a financial outline of what we've spent the money on, how we've achieved our milestones, and what our unit counts are.
Thank you councillor, councillor Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to planning staff, I know this is directed towards accessible housing, but are we doing our best to also target affordable, accessible housing, is there a vehicle in here, a way that we can do that, or is this, are we limited by this type of program?
Through the mayor, to the councillors, so this particular policy is targeted for accessible dwelling units, however, we did have a very, basically the same policy come forward in February for affordable units, and that was for waiving planning fees and building permit fees, and then through the overarching HAF action plan, there will be some other incentives that we'll be introducing, targeted to affordability as well as accessible.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you councillor, councillor Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, is there a square footage limit on any of this, or is it too early to, in the stage to ask or have?
Through the mayor, so the way that this has been, the reimbursement model has been drafted is, it's a maximum of 2,000 or 100%, $2,000, sorry, or 100% of the building permit fees, so because the building permit fees are calculated based on the square, square feet size of the unit, then it, you know, that would dictate the, the cost for reimbursement.
Okay, I think, one thing I was just wondering, like if, this is, this also applies if someone's going to put a, a unit in their basement, is that correct?
If it's made accessible, then it would qualify, yes.
Okay, yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you councillor Stevens, councillor Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this applies beginning basically tomorrow, for the next year, however, if someone has gone about restructuring their house or building a, a unit that meets the accessibility requirements in the last year, or since we, we had the, the fund, would they be able to apply for, to get the money back from the, the fees that they, they had to pay earlier, because to me, it's almost like a penalty, like, oh my goodness, if I would have waited for another year, I would have been able to save myself a couple thousand dollars, instead of, you know, they, they could have, say, started this unit six months ago, and now they're almost being penalized because they went early, would they be able to apply for consideration to get that building permit fee back?
Through the mayor, to the councillor, typically, we don't deal with retroactivity with a lot of our policies, it is unfortunate, like you said, because it's something they probably didn't even know was coming up, so it's not like they could have waited either, but we do have to kind of draw that line somewhere, and part of the difficulty with HAF as well is that it's to incentivize the creation of new units, so if we're paying for units that have already been created, we're not really meeting the, the kind of spirit of what the HAF action plan is trying to do, unfortunately.
Okay, so in a case like that, if we would have had someone six months ago coming for a building permit, you wouldn't have said, well, if you wait for six months, we might be able to help you a little bit more?
Through the mayor, to the councillor, I mean, if they, if someone was really watching council and, you know, reading all the HAF reports, they might have seen it in our HAF action plan, but can't really expect that from every member of the public, unfortunately, right?
Okay, it's really unfortunate, that's the situation, because they, they have gone ahead and done this, and now they're almost, almost like they're being penalized, thank you.
I, I will add some context to that, and say that, in a situation with incentives, what we're hoping is that those folks who would have made the opposite decision said, oh, I'm not going to go forward with this because the cost is so high, this will push them over the tipping point, someone who looked at the costs and made the decision to go forward with it, obviously, it was feasible and, and made sense from their perspective. I totally understand your point of view, councillor Phillips, I just, let's keep in mind that that is the goal of the incentive, is to push people past the tipping point that otherwise wouldn't have built the unit. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will at this time look to the clerk to call the roll. Oh, I do need a mover and a seconder for this one, councillor Phillips, councillor Dodge, wonderful.
Councillor Phillips?
Yes.
Councillor Dodge?
Yes.
Councillor Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Harris?
Yes.
Councillor Kushner?
Yes.
Councillor Lindell?
Yes.
Councillor McPherson?
Yes.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens, or Ratzoff?
Yes.
Councillor Stevens?
Yes.
Councillor Townsend?
Yes.
Councillor Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Sisko?
Yes.
That's Carrie.
All right, moving on to 11.2, Office of the Chief Administrative Officer Housing Accelerator Fund Development Charge Rental Housing Discount Grant Program, prior to this report, I will call upon Margaret Jossipovic, Senior Manager of the Housing Accelerator Program, to provide a presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, we have more exciting HAF initiatives before you, so I will be presenting the Development Charge Rental Housing Discount Grant Program, so this is part of Initiative Four, our missing middle initiatives of our house, of our HAF action plan, and the aim is to target financial support for purpose-built rental units in the city, so the milestone is to launch the DC incentive for rental housing, and a great picture of the mayor there. So in our existing development charges, in 2001, council passed the Development Charges Bylaw, applying development charges throughout the city, in 2022, the Development Charges Act, which governs all development charges in Ontario, was amended by the More Homes Built Faster Act, and it provided discounts and exemptions for affordable housing units and rental units that were being constructed, so what it did is mandate that municipalities and regions put forward certain discounts for purpose-built rentals, so it was 15% for one-bedroom units or smaller, so studios, 20% discount for two-bedrooms, and 25% discount for three-bedrooms or larger, so that's automatically deducted when somebody comes and applies for their building permit. So what we're proposing with our grant, to encourage the development of purpose-built rentals, is to top up some of these discounts, so to increase that discount from what we are charging, and the idea from our end is to pull it up to 50% for one-bedroom units or smaller, so it's the 15% development charge discount, plus another 35 from our HAF fund, and then 50, 50% for two-bedroom units, so that's 20% from the DC Act, and then 30% from the HAF, and 35% total discount for three-bedroom units and plus, so you can kind of see that what I've done a little bit is opposite from what the DC Act did, so they really focused on encouraging the larger, larger units, which seems to be a little bit more of a GTA-focused approach, and you'll see a little bit further in the presentation that our needs are actually in the one-bedroom unit size. So we are recommending that the studio in one bedroom and two bedrooms be larger than the three-bedroom, and part of this was based on the information pulled from the region's attainable housing strategy that was published a few months ago, and also from the core housing need information that you can kind of see displayed on the screen, so we are in the eight thousands for single or roommate households, and then four and eight for the larger households. So the additional discount would pertain to building permits issued between January 1st of 2025 and December 31st of 2025, and then we would be bringing forward a report in Q1 of 2026 and 2027 to determine if we would continue with the program, a lot of this will be determined based on the success of the program, our funding availability, and how else we're spending the budget of HAF, and then the idea would be that a rental agreement would be required to ensure that the dwelling units maintain purpose-built rental for 10 years, and then this proposed discount does not apply to development charges from the region or the school board. So to give you an idea of how this would look, there's a sample calculation, so right now, we'd be charging about 6,400 for a one-bedroom apartment unit, in the dark blue, you see the mandatory DC Act discount of 15%, so about $969, which puts a developer at about 5,400, the green. The proposed calculation, you'd remove that same 969, 15%, and then an additional 35 in the light blue, so about another discount of 2,262, reducing it to 3,231, so you can kind of see, when you put them side by side, that we're covering a lot more of that development charge, making it hopefully easier for people to create rental units in the city. So we did do public consultation with the development community over the summer, and kind of into the fall, and one of the things that we had asked them was fill out a survey to demonstrate what was the number one or most impactful types of incentives that would stimulate housing construction within the next couple of years, and as you can see right there at the top is DC grants, that was kind of the overwhelming response, and then per, per-unit construction grants, affordable unit grants, parkland dedication, and then kind of you can see the rest as they go, like Natasha had mentioned, there are other additional incentives we will be looking at and bringing forward to council in the new year, once we've confirmed year-two funding and the success of other programs. So the financial implications, the existing mandated discount from the Development Charges Act is funded through the city's DC exemption reserve, and then that proposed top-up, the difference, would be funded through the Housing Accelerator Fund, so the recommendation is that council approve the Development Charge Rental Housing Discount Grant Program, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jossipovic, any questions for staff, as Ms. Jossipovic goes back to her seat, I look to councillor Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, that, that 10-year timeline for rental property, at the end of 10 years, then the owner of the property could actually apply to the city then to convert them to condos if they wanted to?
Through the mayor, to the councillor, according to the agreement that they would sign with us, yes, but we do still have rental conversion policies in our official plan, so if our vacancy rate is low enough for a few years, we still wouldn't be in a position to approve the conversion, even though they had kind of reached their 10-year limit.
So potentially they could, but in, in all likelihood, if everything's going well for them, that they probably wouldn't, we hope.
Correct, and if they can meet our policies, that means we have a healthy rental housing supply in the city.
True enough, and then just so everyone remembers again, this money that we're providing these grants for comes from that federal money that we got back in the spring, just so people realize, the city doesn't have all that money just laying around, ready to give out to people.
Correct.
Thank you councillor Stevens, an important reminder. Are there any other questions for staff, councillor Ratzoff?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, through you, just to clarify, so like when we, when we have to give the, the 15% discount on DCs, that's just no money coming into the city, when we're topping it up, we are getting money to help pay for infrastructure that's needed to service those, those new units, like through the HAF program?
Through the mayor, to the councillor, that original 15% is actually funded, it's just funded by the city.
Okay, it's funded by the city?
Correct.
So we have a DC reserve that we fund, so when we have to give exemptions, we can backfill with that reserve.
All right, yeah, thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, I will close very briefly, I hesitate at all times to ever give any credit to Ms. Jossipovic, it's a joke, I will say, this is an excellent initiative, I think this is very much in line with what a lot of us were hoping for with the Housing Accelerator Fund, and I think it's a best practice that I would think, after we throw this out to the general public and people take a look at it, other municipalities may be emulating, I think everybody recognizes that our rental market is very, very tight, as tight as it could be, when I speak about it, I tell people, functionally, we have a vacancy rate of zero, it's not actually zero, it's a smidge above zero, but it functions as a 0% vacancy rate, and that's problematic, so I would encourage my colleagues, I think this is one of the best initiatives we are going to institute, it's time-limited, which I think is a It's time limited, which I think is important as well. This is going on for a year. So if there are developers in the community, and I can tell you, there are a lot of developers who are talking about building rental, purpose-built rental units. If there are developers in the community that want to take advantage of this, it could be very significant for some of those larger developments. It can be very significant for smaller developments as well. In a very tight financing situation, which the current market is, this would be helpful. This would be very helpful. So I would encourage my colleagues to vote in favor. I think this is the right next step for the Housing Accelerator Fund. And with that, I will look to the clerk. After, oh, wait a minute, we have a delegation. My apologies. Oh, that's right, we have Drew. I always love it when Drew comes to speak. We have Drew Toth coming up.
There we go.
It is the best part of our council chamber.
It really is. I got some of these desks at my office. It's great you work up here, lower as well. Good evening, Mayor, city councillors, staff, and the general public. As you know, my name is Drew Toth from Elevate Living. My company focuses on three things: land development, construction, and investments. And a big part of my life is spent focusing on how do we make housing work? How do we create more housing in the Niagara region? And in fact, I've spent really the last 10 years of my life focused on this very thing. I want to share with you a bit of my, let me just figure out the slide here.
Need to use the remote control.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so a bit about me in regards to the context of affordable housing. I partnered with Gateway of Niagara on creating their last two subsidized affordable and supportive housing projects in the region, a member of Welland Affordable Task Force. I'm part of the innovative affordability innovation team, that one's a mouthful, at Niagara Region, which consists of members from CMHC, the Ontario Government, regional government, local nonprofit leaders, and municipal staff. I've also inputted on the HAP Plan, the homeless housing action plan, for the last 10 years at the region, and I currently serve on the Niagara Regional Housing Board. To give you a little context about, you know, where my comments will come from here. Thank you. I wanted to share with you a few of our last projects that we were able to make work successfully. One that you guys may be familiar with was 268 Oakdale in St. Catharines. Previous property taxes, 967; current property taxes, 46695. It went from a vacant orphan lot to 28 units. If we can go to the next slide. This was a net-zero certified ready house. Next slide. It is very important that when we're creating affordable units, that the quality that we deliver to the market is the exact same as any market unit, so that if you went into one of the affordable units that are created, you would see no difference. If we can go to next slide, next slide. Another example of one of our current projects that just finished was 699 Niagara Street in Welland, started as a single home, taxes 9,32121. After 129 units, it's the building on the right, annual taxes 262086. If we go to the next slide. We were able to deliver 17% of these units as affordable units, and it was a 26.5% decrease in energy consumption and GHD emissions above building code. There are some other innovations in this product, but I'm going to skip it for time's sake. If we could go to the next slide. Sorry, back one, thank you. As we all know, housing has become very difficult, and increasingly more difficult in the last few years, to actually create any viable rental project, number one, and second, any rental project that has affordable units. And so, very simply put, the only way to make a project viable for affordability is to reduce costs. And I want to share with you tonight what is actually working to reduce costs and make projects work. If we go to the next slide. I want to pause for a moment and take a quick look at where the expenses are in a purpose-built rental project. My source of this slide, as you can see in the bottom right, is the Altus Group. The Altus Group is the leading data provider for economics and housing costs across Canada, and specifically southern Ontario. They have the most amount of quantity surveyors, which are basically cost consultants. So as a developer or as a nonprofit organization, when you go to do a project, you have to have your costs verified by a cost consultant. And that's what you bring to the bank, and you track all your costs from the beginning of the project to the end of the project. And so they storehouse all of the actual costs, and this is what this data was put together with. So if you take a look, we're going to go from the bottom to the top, because that's how you build houses, you start with the land and the foundation, and you work your way up. 5% to 15% today is land value, 55% to 65% is your construction hard costs, your material, your labor, 12% to 15% is your soft costs, architectural, engineer, financing cost, 20% to 22% is your government charges, and if you don't go over on your costs, there's 5% to 6% left for developers' profit. Let's go to the next slide. So what I want to talk about tonight is what is actually working, right? What is actually working to reduce costs? Number one, one of the best moves, in my opinion, that the federal and provincial government has done is remove HST on purpose-built rentals. Historically, you finish a project, you have to evaluate what the cost is, and then cut a check for 13%. So that move helped move the needle significantly in the creation of purpose-built rentals. Number two is the CMHC MLI Select Program, and this reduces costs in three ways. The first one is the money that's needed in a project to get your funding is reduced, right? Think of it as the deposit that you would make to purchase a house. So it's a higher loan-to-value mortgage. Historically, you would need 20% to 25% of cash in a project to get funding. With this program, you can get, go as little as 5%. I have never seen 5%. We've achieved as low as 12% through CMHC. The second one is lower monthly mortgage payments through a 40- to 50-year amortization. It doesn't save money, and it doesn't increase profit, but what it does is just simply reduces the monthly payment, so the lower rent can cover and float your operating costs and help with viability. Three is interest rate based on current bond rates. So the program, even in the height of interest rates, was offering bond rates, so we were closing in the 4% and as low as 3.98%. So again, a needle mover on what that monthly payment is. Three is expedited approvals for affordable housing projects from municipalities and regional governments. The time for approval of developments and for building permits drives costs up, so very simply, just an effort of putting any application that has affordable housing to the top of the pile and moving it forward helps with viability and reducing costs. Four is development charge waivers like the one before you tonight, and I'm advocating on behalf of the development community that you guys vote yes to this program. The work that Margaret and Natasha has done so far on the half, I applaud them, it's been great work, and it's pieces like this that help move us to be able to create more affordable housing. Five is tax incentive grants, the CIP program. The program that you guys have in place is a good one, and it's very key because one of the key things is, once you create affordable housing, how do you actually maintain it for the long term, which is what we're all looking to accomplish? Again, part of your operating costs, typical operating costs, and you can look this up with CMHC, is 30% on a purpose-built rental. So by reducing the tax, that property tax payment over 10 years, it helps ensure that the lower rents that are coming can cover the operating costs on that longer-term basis. Six, CMHC seed grant. This is a grant that's offered through CMHC, and it provides funding in the beginning of the project, because you have to spend typically, you know, somewhere around $80,000 just to see if a project is viable, and you're going to move forward with it. It's a great program. Seven is projects that mix affordable, attainable, and market rents. Very simply, the market rents help subsidize the lower rents. It's stacking all of these things together that is the tipping point to actually make projects viable. If we can go to next slide. Okay, so the current Housing Accelerator Fund program that has been approved is $40,000 for accessory dwelling units, which I think is fantastic, $80,000 for garden suites. The additional program that's being proposed tonight with the rounding up of the DC waivers, my recommendation to council and staff tonight is that you add another prong to the Housing Accelerator program. I think that in order to hit the target of 11,000 units, a multi-pronged approach is needed. The work that's being done so far is good, and I'm going to recommend another one to be added. And that would be a $60,000 grant for any affordable rental unit that is created in the city of St. Catharines. And the second recommendation is that a 50% application and building permit fee reduction be implemented for projects with a minimum of 15% affordable rental units in them. Okay, if we can go to next slide. So it's great for me to throw out the term affordable, but as we know, that is a very confusing term these days. So when I say affordable housing, I want to define clearly what I actually mean. I would propose that one of two, one or the other of these definitions be used. The first one is the CMHC definition, which is 30% of the median wage in St. Catharines, based on Statistics Canada 2019, which works out to $1,047.50 a month. Or the province and region, as they define it, which is $1,053 for a studio unit, $1,338 for a one-bedroom, $1,552 for a two-bedroom, or $1,620 for a three-bedroom. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, how can you ensure long-term affordability? Because it's very important that if this money is being given out, that we ensure it's going for the right thing. So my recommendation would be, if the applicant has an approval from CMHC that will be registered on title, that will be a governance way to ensure that the money is being used and applied to the affordable housing. Second option would be a municipal agreement registered on title. Both of those two would be mechanisms that could be used by council and staff to ensure that it is actually going to maintain longer-term affordability, similar to the 10-year that was suggested in regards to the DC waiver. And the last part is protect city budget. So, you know, it's great to implement a program like this, but I also know that you guys are responsible to maintain a budget and many other responsibilities, and so there would be a shelf for this program based on the housing accelerator funds available at that time. I know that the money is being sent on an annual basis and is subject to change, and so that would be a way to protect that the money is only coming through the Housing Accelerator Fund, coming through CMHC. Next slide. Okay, we are at the end. So that is my presentation for you guys this evening, and I'm happy to receive any questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Toth. I do appreciate you fitting a five-minute presentation into 14 and a half minutes. Councillor Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, very instructive. Mr. Toth, in terms of CIP, a number of us around here are concerned that instead of going towards the end users, the renters, and making these properties or buildings more affordable for them, that the money gets diverted and is just used in profits for the developer. The CMHC registering, et cetera, is there ways to assure that the CIP money actually translates down to the people who need it most?
Thank you for your question. Through you, Mr. Chair, councillor Williamson. The only, this is my opinion, but my recommendation is that if that CIP is given out and the registration on title of a CMHC program or a municipal agreement with the city, that ensures that that project will in turn deliver the affordable units. Does that make sense?
So that's a guarantee that could be taken to the bank?
When it's registered on title, it's enforced, and even, so I'll give you an example. Say I'm the applicant for this. I get a CIP, I get $60,000 per unit, I have a 100-unit building, and I have the CMHC program registered on title. With the CMHC program, I have an annual accountability to hand in leases to prove it, and if I was to try to sell my building, that registration on title goes to the next person, and they're held accountable for it as well.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Councillor Ratslov?
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Thank you, Drew, for presenting today. I think some of your ideas for how we can build more affordable housing are really interesting, and I just wanted to just ask, my first question just concerns, so currently, we're providing through the half-program, $40,000 to $80,000 per accessible dwelling unit, and we don't require that those dwelling units are, or continue to be affordable, although by nature of an accessory dwelling unit, often those are at the lower end of the rental market. I'm just wondering, your idea, just to clarify, is $60,000 per unit, new unit constructed in, say, one of your buildings? So you're saying that a grant for $60,000 would help you add what percentage more to those buildings of affordable units? Right? Because you showed a project there that was 15%? So if we had this in play, where we'd be offering a grant similar to the ADU of $60,000, what percentage could you get that up to?
Thank you for your question. Through you, Chair, to councillor Ratslov. I couldn't tell you like an exact number, because every project varies a bit. My land costs can vary, the construction costs that I would take out at that time, those I can estimate pretty good, but until I baked the cake of that whole performer, I couldn't tell you an exact percentage that it would be. But I can tell you that it would be a tipping, you know, point to create more units. I would say, my thought is that it would help make that 15% viable, and I think that if I'm thinking back on previous projects, it would probably even take me from 15 to 20. And that's an estimate, because every project is different.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, affordable housing is top of mind for a lot of us. There's people in our community who are having to make hard decisions around paying rent or paying for food, and so if this is something that we can do today, it's definitely something that we should be looking into. I'm always hesitant to hand over public money to, you know, the private sphere, so as councillor Williamson was inquiring about that guarantee, that those units maintain affordable for, into the future. So I'm curious, like, how long would you recommend that guarantee be? 10, 15, 25 years? And, I mean, it's even more important today, because on all these units we're talking about, any unit that's built after 2018, there's no guarantee, there's no rent control. So, you know, the landlord can raise the rent whatever they want. So we could give you this money, and then tomorrow, your next year after their lease is up, you could raise the rent. So I think it's really important that we get some guarantees, and so I'm curious, how long would you see a reasonable expectation for how long that housing should remain affordable?
Thank you for your question. Through you, Chair. Just wanted to respond, we cannot just up the rent to whatever we choose with the affordability component. On the market rents, you're right, there's no rent control, but on the affordable units, they have to remain that way. I just wanted clarification, that's an important point. Second, to respond to your question, in regards to the term, yes, I would recommend 10-year term. There are five-year terms available on MLI Select through CMHC, so it's important that everyone knows that. There are 10-year terms as well. My recommendation would be 10-year, because I believe after 10 years, with the rate of inflation, there would be concern about the of inflation, there would be concern about the viability of that project if there wasn't at least allowance for the rate of inflation.
No, that's, that's helpful. Thanks for your presentation.
No problem.
Counselor Phillips.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And my question doesn't necessarily apply to you, Drew, because I think you're one of the good guys. As far as profit, in the, the building that you showed us with the profit of the developers at the top at five, five to six percent, what did it used to be? Like, say, ten, fifteen years ago, has it always been five or six percent, or was it up to ten percent at that time?
Good, good question. Could you bring that slide, actually, here, I got this, bring this slide back up. Anyways, let me respond for time's sake before we get there, but one of the key things, if you look at government fees that are now twenty to twenty percent, those have escalated significantly. So if, if you take your hard cost increase over the last five years, I'll go five years back, I could go ten years back, and the government charges, and even the soft cost and the land value decrease, even though rents were less, I'll give you an example of a cap rate. So ten years ago, we were purchasing things in St. Catharines that had nine to ten percent cap. We're now moving things we've seen as low as three-point-eight, four, four-point-two-five. So if you want me to give you a percentage, that five to six would have easily been in the twenty percentile range. And anybody who was holding real estate since 2016, we're talking double, and then a second double, and then, of course, we're all aware of what happened through COVID.
So there, it's a, it's a very fine line for profit right now. With the improvements that you've shown us today.
Yes.
Do you foresee that, that five percent profit going up as far as developers are concerned? Are they, is there going to be more money for them, or is all that money going to stay down with the purchaser, or with the renter?
Good, good question. So what I was proposing, and based on the current grid, the difference would only go to the affordability piece.
Okay.
But every, again, every, every model varies a bit. That's important to note. But if there is going to be a trade-off of, say, say a unit costs three hundred thousand, okay? And you do sixty thousand off, and then you do the development charge off, think about the monthly amount that needs to cover, say, two-twenty at that price, right? And anyways, I, I don't want to get too far off to answer your question more bluntly and directly. With the right governance, it will only go to the affordability piece, because there's only so much money that can be spread. Does that make sense? So if you are registered on title to provide, say, fifteen percent affordable units, and that's governed, there's only so much money. So that directly translates to the creation of more affordable units, and there's no money left over to increase, to increase the developer's profit. The only thing that I would see changing over the upcoming cycle of real estate is as interest rates drop, bond rates typically drop. So our bond rates now are fluctuating in the, you know, mid-threes to higher threes. So if they, if interest rates start dropping, bond rates start dropping, and there could be some percentage points that are picked up for developer profit through that spot.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Counselor Phillips. Counselor Townsend.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Toth, for your presentation tonight, and thank you for being an advocate for affordable housing. You've been just someone who's been very consistent, coming to council and talking about affordability, so something we don't hear very often from our developers that come forward with presentations. My question through you, sorry, to, through the chair to you, is, is it common, do you know of any municipalities that do offer that opportunity to have the municipality on title with that key component of affordability? And a second part of that question would be, I guess, would a developer, developer be comfortable, if you had any conversations with other developer colleagues that would be, you know, in favor of having the municipality on title with an affordability deal in place?
Thank you, Counselor Townsend, through your chair. Yes, this is a standard practice. It has been done over the years. I currently have a joint venture with another developer in Lincoln, and we have agreed to do that for an apartment building on that site at, on Hickson Street. And municipal agreements have been done with the private sector and cities before. There's multiple examples of it. I could, if, if it's important, I could get examples from other municipalities and other private developers that I know to send to staff and report back to council.
Thank you for that. It might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Townsend. Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I have a number of questions. First of all, on the definitions, you gave us a couple of definitions of affordable housing. Which one do you propose that we use? Because there was quite a difference. And secondly, you talked about attainable housing as well, and there was no definition.
Thank you, Counselor. Through you, Chair. The definition that I would propose would be the regional and provincial definition, which had the four different amounts for, tied directly to the different unit types. Second question in regards to housing attainability, there is no definition for attainable housing yet. We are waiting for the, the province to release it. The region did put, I believe, four or five characteristics out defining it in a report to regional council in August. And, and I don't want to mess it up, but my understanding of that was units that are created by the private sector that could be purchased without government subsidies, either purchased or rented, rented by, I believe, the fourth, fifth, and sixth income decile in the, in the region. But I can, I can get that information to you.
Okay. Thank you. And a little confused as far as your comments on term. When Counselor Ratliff asked that question, you talked about five or ten years. But earlier, you had said that the CMHC agreements had a certain timeline, and that being on title was permanent, as I understand it. So trying to understand how those work, because you talked about the effect of inflation, but I would think that that would all adjust over the years in terms of what the definition, for example, would go up according to the change in, in median income and so on.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia. The ten-year term on title, and it being on title being as permanent, the term from CMHC, it's a insurance-backed financing product, and it's a ten-year term. It's registered on title for ten years. At the end of those ten years, you have the option to renew for another ten years at new rates and affordable rates at that time, or not renew. So it's permanent on title, I shouldn't use the word permanent, it's on title for the term linked to the CMHC approval, and my suggestion is ten years. And I apologize, I think you asked me a second question, I can't remember it now.
No, no, that, that was it. I was just trying to, to identify what you meant by the term and how that worked. Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, but it's for staff, so I'll wait for that. Okay, thank you.
All right, Counselor Dodge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to the presenter. Thank you for your presentation. I don't know if you've answered this question before, so if you have, I'm sorry, I didn't get it, but you said for affordable housing right now, they're basing it on the twenty-nineteenth median income of property and whatever. So during that ten-year term, or whatever the term is, is it based on that rate for the ten years? Or does, so say they, in, in five years, they say, okay, you know what, median incomes are, yeah, has it gone up? And it's fifty thousand now, so the affordable housing should be whatever that would be. Will it change then? Or does it stay the same for the whole period of time for the, for the, the ten years, twenty years, whatever it is you have? Or does it change as those types of things would change?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Dodge. Through you, Mr. Chair. The program that's set is based on the rates at the time. Would, if you want to apply after those ten years, it would be on the updated Statistics Canada data at that time. And as we know, 2019 is already outdated, but it's the best data that we have to go off, and that's what CMHC sets the rates off of.
Okay, so just for clarification, if we did it today, it would be at the two nineteen, twenty-nineteen rate, and that would be for the ten-year period of time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dodge. Counselor Kushner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I have is with respect to government charges. You've indicated they're twenty to twenty-two percent of the entire cost. Have they gone up in recent years?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Kushner. Through you, Chair. Yes, they have. We see DC charges has one, been one of the most highest cost increase that we've seen through the province. Niagara Falls just increased theirs, and I can't remember the percentage. Port Colborne just put a motion to do thirty thousand per unit, so right across, St. Catharines didn't used to have municipal development charges, now they do. It's been one of the highest drivers of cost, yes.
And are part of those costs federal and provincial costs?
The, oh, in this chart here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, have you approached them for some type of tax relief? Because years ago, they were responsible for housing, we were not.
Yes.
And when has that change taken place?
Thank you for your question.
Because we have a more limited tax base than the provincial and federal governments. So why are you not going to the federal provincial governments for tax relief?
Thank you, Counselor Kushner. That is a great point, and I don't personally know the exact date that that changed, but we are constantly advocating for more funding, not only through the federal government, but also through the provincial government. I'll take my private developer hat on and put my Niagara Regional Housing hat on for a sec. We advocate through the board for more funding to be allocated for affordable and subsidized housing for the region and St. Catharines. I'll put my private developer hat back on and say that the Niagara Home Builders Association, the Ontario Home Builders Association are advocating to the federal government. Like I mentioned in my, my presentation, removing the HST was one of the biggest and best moves, in my opinion, the federal and provincial government has done. The CMHC program is through the federal government, but there needs to be more, as we all know, and I, I couldn't agree with you more, they have a larger tax base, and we are advocating for more funding through the federal government.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kushner. I will just point out, though, with respect to the questions you were asking in St. Catharines, while we did introduce DCs a couple of years ago, our DCs have only risen by the rate of inflation over the last several years since they were introduced. So I will also point out that we have some of the lowest DCs in the Niagara region, and I would argue probably of cities of similar size in the entire province. We have some of the lowest. So when you hear federal politicians specifically talking about massive DCs of hundreds of thousands, half a million, those are most definitely not the city of St. Catharines. We, on a single-family detached home, I want to say thirteen thousand dollars, it's something, it's very limited, in and around that range. I looked it up. I just want to make sure everybody's clear, our DCs are actually very, very low compared to the norm, and we only go up by inflation. I have Counselor Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Just a clarification, because I think what Counselor Garcia and Counselor Dodge were saying, I don't think the, the answer come across right. So that ten-year lock-in thing, that's, does that, you're not saying their rent does not go up for ten years? Like, they move into that building at thousand fifty-one, it'll stay like that for ten years? Or they, do, do they still get the rate of inflation increases?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Stevens. That's correct. It stays.
Okay.
But do note, utilities can be, you know, details are very important, so one thing I want to do mention is utilities can be charged on top of that.
Right.
And utilities would experience an increase for that renter and that, that, that renter.
So clarifying, so that, so that, yeah, for ten years, their rent, their actual rent is set?
Correct.
And then utilities, you know, they, they'll go up, and then at the end of ten years, then they can apply to, at the current rate of what, what it's allowed to be raised, I guess. So it wouldn't be astronomical, it'd be whatever the rate the government would set, like, two percent, half percent, or whatever type of thing, right?
Thank you for your question. It would actually be based on whatever thirty percent is of the median wage in St. Catharines at that time divided by twelve for the monthly rate.
All right, good, no good, thank you for that.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Dodge, for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I wanted to ask you this, when I did have the floor the first time. Have you got any projects on the horizon in St. Catharines?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Dodge, I do. We currently have come in for pre-con, and we are working with staff to, and our team to put an application in for a purpose-built rental on Ontario Street, the old Hotel Deuce site.
Okay. And if that were successful, what would be the occupancy? I know this is really early, but what, what was your kind of goal when that would be available?
I'm actually going to jump in, because it's not related to the presentation or the report. I, that's definitely a question I'm sure Mr. Toth would love to answer, and he will probably do that offline, but now is not the appropriate time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, Mr. Toth, thank you for the presentation and the grilling. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the, to receive the presentation? Counselor Phillips, all those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Thank you, Mr. Toth.
Thank you.
At this time, I have Counselor McPherson to move the recommendation in the report. Can I have a seconder? Counselor?
All second.
I'm going to give that one to Counselor Townsend, just because he's online and it's hard for me to see him. And then Counselor McPherson, you had an addition related to the presentation you wanted to add to the recommendation?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm wondering if we could ask staff to report back on Drew's recommendations, the couple of recommendations he made with regards to the entering into the agreements, as well as the sixty thousand per unit, and if we could get that back as soon as possible.
Okay, so the staff report back on the, the presentation from Mr. Toth?
Yes.
So that's in there. Counselor Townsend, is that friendly to you?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same thing.
Excellent. All right, so at this time, Counselor McPherson, do you wish to speak first to this? Is it your motion?
No, I'll go last. I'm good.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments to the report? Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Counselor McPherson has already added what I wanted to add, but just quickly, through you to staff, I assume that that report will identify how much of that extra grant, if all or any, would be covered by the HAF, right?
Through the mayor to the counselor, yes, we can definitely do that. We were planning on bringing sort of options for other incentives back February or March of 2025, after we received confirmation of year-two funding, just because we didn't want to bring any more incentives forward and kind of create some certainty for the development community than not know that we have the funding to be able to support those programs. If you'd like us to bring it forward before then, it will just be sort of an exploration or detail of what, what it would cost, how it would be implemented. And for the agreements, we actually already do implement those through our current CIP for affordable housing piece. I think we gave well into the template, so.
I like it when we find out where best practices. Counselor Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just speak fully in support of this program, but I, I do want to point out that development charges were brought, were brought back for a good reason. We have twin crises of, in housing and in infrastructure, which is falling apart. And so the idea here was it for development charges to help pay for, and even when it comes to infill developments, it's using our existing infrastructure, but our existing infrastructure is also failing, and there's huge costs involved in maintaining it. So I did want to make that point, and I'm fully supportive of this program. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, Counselor McPherson, you have the final comment. All right, seeing none, Counsel McPherson, you have the final comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I think this is a great program, and I think that we have to explore, in the challenge to get affordable housing and get rental units into the city, I think we have to look at as many opportunities as possible to work with the development community and help them get these buildings built. Because I believe, Mr. Mayor, you've said several times in the past, possibly quite recently, you know, the city doesn't build housing as much as I like to think I can build things. But working with the development community, I think, is really important, because they are the ones who are going to be making the units happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McPherson. I already said my piece a couple of minutes ago, so I will leave it at that. I'll look to the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel McPherson?
Yes.
Counsel Townsend?
Yes.
Counsel Williamson?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Phillips?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel Lindell?
Yes.
Counsel Kushner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Dodge? And Mayor Sisco?
Yes.
That's carried.
Wonderful. And for those who may have noticed a slight catch in the clerk's throat when she was speaking there, I just wanted to point out she is not ill. She may have been at the Buffalo Bills football game yesterday. Cheering on our quarterback. All right, moving on to 11.3, Legal and Clerk Services, Office of the City Clerk. Appointment of Deputy Mayor for 2025 and 2026. Last week, staff emailed the members of City Council and requested that anyone interested in serving as deputy mayor submit their name to the Office of the City Clerk. Counselors Phillips and Stevens have put their names forward. We will go to a ballot system for those counselors in person. For the counselors on Zoom, please email Donna Delvecchio and Sarah McWilliams now with who you would like to appoint as deputy mayor. Staff will then tally the results to prepare the motion for council's consideration. As a reminder, the procedural bylaw requires that ballots be recorded in the meeting minutes. Counselor? Stop. I'm sure you did throw chalk, Counsel. All right, while we are waiting for the votes to be tallied, we will come back to item 11.3 in a moment. We'll move on to 12 motions. 12.1, formally naming the site commonly referred to as Lock One in Port Alusi. Moving the motion, I have Counsel Garcia seconding. I have Counsel Williamson. Counselor Garcia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, the Lock One of the Second Canal, which is now across from Portside Social, but many people still think of it as across from Murphy's. It has been restored and turned into a council, sorry, a concert venue. It's been very successful, very popular, and the city staff were ready to put up a sign recognizing all the different groups that contributed to this work, community people, as well as Rankin Construction. And there was some difference of opinion as to what the name should be. So staff recommended that we go through the already council-approved park naming policy, and that way, everybody will get a chance to express their opinion. So that should be pretty simple.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will look to the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Williamson? Counsel Dodge? Counsel Harris? Counsel Kushner? Counsel Lindell?
Yes.
Counsel McPherson?
Yes.
Oh, there it is.
Counsel Miller?
Yes, yes.
Counsel Phillips?
Yes.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Sisco?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Okay, going back to 11.3, the recommendation that is being made, that Counsel Phillips be appointed deputy mayor for the period starting Jan. 1, 2025, lasting until the end of 2022 to 2026 term of council. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Counsel Dodge, Counsel Harris. I will look to the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Dodge?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Counsel Garcia?
Yes.
Counsel Williamson?
Yes.
Counsel Townsend?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
No.
Counsel Ratliff?
Yes.
Counsel Phillips?
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel McPherson?
Yes.
Counsel Lindell?
Yes.
Counsel Kushner?
Yes.
And Mayor Sisco?
Yes.
And that's carried.
Call for notice of motions. I have Counsel McPherson, who's bringing a notice of motion regarding provincial enabling of commercial property assessed clean energy financing tools. And Counsel Harris.
Counsel Kushner, I am going to put forward a notice of motion about parking at Towering Heights for the next, when is the next meeting, December 9th or 7th?
Counselor, I'm just curious, would we expect that there may be a large contingent of folks coming out to speak to that?
Hmm.
Because I will warn, the December 9th meeting currently is very full. And it's full with a number of items that would have public delegations, and as this would be the last thing added, it would be the last delegation of the evening, whereas a meeting in January, we could probably make it the first delegation.
I think I'll defer to my partner.
If we promise that not many are coming out and that it will be approved, yes.
That sounds good.
So January.
First meeting in January?
First meeting in January.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll go with that.
So we're considering this the notice of motion for the first meeting in January. Thank you, much appreciated. Are there any other notices of motion? All right, seeing none. Report requests. Counsel Williamson, I know you have a report request. Do you wish to speak to it very briefly?
It's on the screen. I've spoken to staff about it. Don't need to speak to it.
Okay. So an invasive species management plan and implementation strategy. Counsel Harris, yours is related to the costs and feasibility of adding refrigeration capacity when we are doing court renewals as part of the parks renewal plan. Do you want to speak to it, or are you comfortable with it? Okay.
When would that come back exactly?
Well, it's asking for consultation with the Rec Master Plan Advisory Committee. I would suggest Q2 or Q3.
I guess the issue I have is if we're going to redo a few different parks, we might want to know what we're doing prior to certain parks. I'm winking at you.
Mr. Oaks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies to Mr. Christie, as he was off last week when the conversation happened with his team. The intent of this would be in anticipation of a park that is scheduled for, that will be part of the next capital program, 2027.
Okay.
Excellent. And then Counsel Stevens, you have a request for a report regarding alleviating traffic issues in areas that are frequented by driving schools. Would you wish to speak to it?
Quickly, yeah. Yeah, this, the area, it's, oh, God.
You can speak broadly.
I lost the name of the street, but anyways, yeah, there's the license and, you know, where the license renewal place is on Bunning Road there, and they're using the neighborhood in Dorchester and stuff, and it's a bus route, and 100, could be up to 100 cars a day. They're, all the driving schools are taking their students through the test route, and it's a bus route, there are schools nearby, it's very unsafe for the residents. And I already did talk to staff, and they said there might be something coming to report about, and making sure that these driving schools are licensed as well. And supposedly, there's some kind of bylaw that we can actually prohibit driving schools from going down certain areas in the neighborhood, so we're looking back to hear that report as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we've got three. Counsel Dodge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if this is the right time to ask for the report for possibly making at our pathways, like Walker's Creek and Scott Street, the trail pass where they go across busy streets, to have some type of pedestrian safety initiatives put there? And then also, if we could have a couple of locations repainted for crosswalks as well? And in the, when I say initiatives, I'm talking about like pedestrian crosswalks, like the Pet Head.
Yep.
And then also, while we're waiting for that, would it be possible, or would it be an advisable thing, that maybe we could put a stop sign there so that people coming to the, they stop before they cross the road?
So I think we'd be asking for a report back on the pedestrian safety initiatives and other traffic tools at the...
Entrances to the paths?
The trail crossings over city roads.
Sure.
So I think that's a report request. And if you could, I know there are specific locations. Can I leave it to the ward counselors to forward those on to Mr. Martuccio, just so he has a better idea of what specific areas came out of that town hall meeting last week?
Okay. And also, any of them that perhaps are crossings that are crossing regional roads as well, if the region can be asked for anything that they could give to us towards that as well?
Okay, so if I could just ask that you forward on those locations, specific locations, to Mr. Martuccio?
Sure.
Okay, excellent.
No problem.
Okay, so I've got Counsel Williamson and then Counsel Townsend.
Thank you. Just piggybacking on to Counsel Harris', seasonal outdoor skating rinks, I'm not sure how many days or a year now we're getting out of them. And so I think we need to be considering the viability. I'm not asking for a separate report, but I just think when we're talking about these things, we've got to take into consideration we have a changed climate, and we maybe need to be looking at artificial ice or...
So that's Counsel Harris's request.
Okay, okay, oh, he's including that.
He's looking for the capital costs associated with when we redo one of the courts, we put in the equipment to allow for seasonal outdoor.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Counsel Townsend?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This, I'm just going back to my colleague, Counsel Stevens', request. This request did come through our, through MPP Stevens' office. I think we do also have to work with her office, too, because the challenge with this is it's actually being used by the Driver Test Center, which is, I believe, operated under the MTO. So there is some provincial stuff here as well. I'm wondering if maybe we can work in collaboration with MPP Stevens' office to see if maybe they can also reach out to, I believe it's Service Ontario, or the Driver Test Center run through the MTO, to maybe find alternative locations where they can do these driver tests. I'm not sure if that, if Counsel Stevens, we can add that wording into their request?
I think we can include that as direction to staff on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, seeing no other hands, all those in favor of the report requests, opposed, that's carried. Committee and Task Force Minutes, can I have a mover and a seconder to receive and file the minutes? Counsel Miller, Counsel Harris, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Bylaws listed on the council agenda, A to C, be read a first time, considered and passed, and then designed and executed by the mayor and the clerk. Mover and a seconder, Counsel Stevens, Counsel Phillips, all those in favor, opposed, that's carried. Motion to adjourn. Who's got the motion to adjourn? Counsel Harris. Seconded by Counsel Stevens. All those in favor, opposed. Good night.